So let me get to the question of the ethical violations that have been alleged. We have been advised that complaints, I assume it's in the plural because there were two, there were two parties, the applicant and Mr. Glusing, complaints have been made with the state, the State Ethics Commission. And so just last week, town council Chris Heap sent a more detailed letter to the State Ethics Commission requesting guidance on what this board can and cannot do in terms of postponing hearings or whatever. Mr. Heap's letter is, is in the package, in the, in the packet that's on the website. I am going to open it up to the, to the planning board, to the entire board as to whether they wish to consider continuing tonight's hearing to wait for a response from the State Ethics Commission, or if they are willing to proceed so that we get materials in front of us and have the information in front of us as we go along. And also a question of whether we want to ask for the town to hire an independent counsel, an expert on ethics law to advise us on what we can and cannot do. Mr. Huber, I'm going to wait to call on you to let members of the planning board speak first. Would anybody on the planning board like to speak to this? Adam?
So I, I have a few thoughts on the question of ethics. I am somewhat familiar with the suggestion that, that some ethic, that some violations of the state ethics law may have occurred. I'm not convinced myself that in fact a legal violation has occurred. However, I'm not an expert. And I, and the people that have alleged, who have raised these concerns certainly have a legitimate right and a valid, and their voice is valid in the process, as is everybody else's. I, I, I can understand the appearance, it's a challenge. Ordinarily here, we would simply have a, a local developer who hired a local architect because the local architect happens to be a good architect who does work in residential and who has a good professional reputation. Unfortunately, in this circumstance, it's not just any ordinary developer, it is a, a member of the select board. And it's not just any architect, the architect so engaged happens to be on the design review board. And both of those individuals are chair of their own boards. And it's been suggested that the design review board, that the select board has oversight to a degree on, on the composition of the design review board. And I would like to think that it's absolutely ridiculous that one is in the pocket of the other. I just, I just, you know, we've all been through these kinds of vicious personal attacks before and I, I just cannot see that happening. However, the truth is, we don't know if a violation exists and what that impact may have. So I think that we want to avoid a circumstance where, with all due respect, Mr. Evans to your client, we don't want a decision to be rendered by default because of an internal process that prolongs the hearing to a point where, where our default judgment is effectively entered in favor with, to your client without regard to any comments that members of the town, in particular this planning board, may otherwise wish to suggest or impose as restrictions or limitations on the development. We want to avoid that circumstance. On that basis, on the basis that, that we don't know the validity of any of these ethics claims, I would, I would propose that we continue with the hearing tonight on the merits of the application and that we, and that we do have an ethics, an independent counsel who specializes in ethics law advise us on, on what the scope of our authority is with respect to this, with respect to, you know, this circumstance. But if the rest of the board is satisfied based on the leader case and other, you know, and the, and this reading of the state statute, then perhaps that latter part's not required, not required, I apologize.
Gene or Marty, do you have any comments that you'd like to make?
I'm satisfied that with the research that's been done by town council Christopher Heap, pointing out that the planning board under general laws, chapter 268A, section 21, may request revision, rescission of its prior action after a finding by the ethics commission. I, I don't know how long it might take the ethics commission to respond to the complaint that's been filed with the commission, but I, I want to proceed with this hearing and if it needs to be continued because substantive issues are raised with whatever the continued date is and then close the hearing and, you know, if, if there is no decision by the ethics commission at the time of our vote to either grant or deny the site plan approval, take that vote. And then if, if there is after that, after that time, a, a decision by the ethics commission will evaluate it, it may be at that time, we will need more specialized legal advice. But at the moment, I'm inclined to go forward with the hearing along, you know, that path.
What about the suggestion that we, that we ask the town to hire, and, and I say ask the town because it would, it would come out of the general budget, hire an independent counsel to advise us? I, I reread the leader case prior to this. I reread it this afternoon and I do think that there's a distinction in the leader case to where we are. So in the, in the statute 268A, section 21, and in the leader case, and then there's, there's also a, a, an unreported appeals court case that actually had like half a page that was published somewhere and I was able to get it online, but it's not actually in the bound volumes. But in, in both of those cases, and I think is contemplated by the statute, a decision had been rendered by the town board. And so the question was one of whether it was right to request a rescission or to get a rescission. In the leader case, they were seeking an injunction to prevent the board from enforcing its decision or going forward with its decision. And the court found that it wasn't right because pursuant to the statute, you had to have the finding under the, the finding of an ethics violation by the state ethics commission first before you can rescind the decision. We don't have a decision yet. So those cases aren't directly on point in the sense of we're still in the hearing process. So those cases aren't exactly directly on point in that what's being sought by the, by the neighbors who have requested relief here is that we cease proceeding with the, with the hearing until such time as an ethics decision is made. Adam raises a good point that I do want to point out to the neighbors, which is that if we continue the hearings, we don't go forward pursuant to the zoning statute, and I believe this is a gray area, I don't know that this is definitely the case, but we run this risk that the pursuant to the statute, it may be that because too much time has passed, the relief requested by the applicant as presented by the applicant is deemed given, which removes our ability to put further regulation onto, the, for the conditions onto this project. I don't think that's a remedy that the, that the neighbors would want to risk happening in this case. So, so I'm inclined to go forward with the hearing and then when we're ready to close the hearing, see where the, whether we've heard from the state ethics commission and if the, if the board would like to ask for the hiring of an independent counsel, we can, we can certainly go forward with that, but I think we should have that vote tonight so that if we do go forward with an independent counsel, that person can get started. We'd have to find one first, but that's my thoughts on it. Marty, you have any?
Same place you and Gene are, but I'm not sure that I would seek to hire independent counsel now. So I guess to that extent, I'm where Gene is on that. I think that piece can wait.
Okay.
But I'm prepared to go forward tonight.
So I think, I think there's some consensus. I do, as I stated, I do want to give the, the attendees the ability to comment here. I haven't looked to see whether any hands have been raised. There are, I do see three people with hands raised. Yes, Mr. Huber, I will recognize you before, before I open it up to the, to the attendees. Go ahead.
Thank you. So it sounds to me like majority or perhaps all four of the board members are in favor of moving forward tonight, which is obviously my primary goal. I would just like to state for the record that I believe Mr. Heap, town council, has already notified this board that in his view, he wrote an email back on July 14th, July 16th, I'm sorry, in which he says, and among other things, this is an email to you, Mr. Alpert, but was also shared with other people, including I believe some of the neighbors. As previously discussed, I don't believe that Ms. Abruzzese's arguments relative to the state ethics law provide a basis for the board to stop or postpone its hearing on a zoning application. But again, this is not a subject that the ethics commission will offer an opinion on. I'm aware that Mr. Heap has recently sent a letter to the ethics commission, you know, asking for an opinion that he had previously been told they were not going to give. My view of this is that it is not appropriate, not only has the board already received an opinion from qualified counsel, that it should, that it has no basis to stop the hearing on the basis of this request or allegation. But I also find it inappropriate, say the least, that the people who are opposed to this project would continue to insist on the validity of their position and continue to ask the board to stop their proceedings after the board has already inquired of town council and received the letter or email reply that they got. I'm sure that the board would not appreciate it if you ruled against my client on this matter or that, and I continue to ask you to change your mind. It's, it's just, you know, in order for this to move forward in anything resembling an orderly fashion, issues get raised, the board makes a decision, it seeks opinion from town council where appropriate, and then we move on. And I think that's what should happen here.
I'm just going to comment that that, that original email and the telephone call that Mr. Heap made to the state ethics commission was prior to it being public knowledge that a formal complaint had in fact been filed with the state ethics commission. And in my mind, pointing out to the state ethics commission that, that we are all aware that a formal complaint has been filed, may, may change the answer that we get from the state ethics commission. I think the state ethics commission was rightfully reluctant to admit or deny whether or not there was a matter actually in front of them. But, you know, this, 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 this letter starts out with, you know, we all now know that there is a complaint in front of you and so we're asking again for your guidance. So, and, you know, to, to be, to be honest on my opinion, I don't expect to get an answer from the state ethics commission in a, in short order. If we get an answer at all, I think it's going to take quite a while. And that's why I'm, I would like to go forward.
I, I.
And I think you've got that.
Okay. Thank you.
May I ask you, Paul?
Sure.
On the question of hiring special counsel and as chair, who might have a special reason for wanting this guidance, do you, do you particularly wish that we would vote to do that?
No. I didn't want to make that decision myself. I wanted to, to have the input from the full, full board. I mean, when I say the full board, of course Natasha has refused herself. I didn't want to dismiss that out of hand. I'm, I'm somewhat confident in my ability to read the law. I'm confident in Mr. Heap's ability to read the law. Neither one of us are ethics specialists. So that's, that's the question as, as to whether we should get a specialist. You know, I, I, I don't think it's necessary personally, but it's certainly something that if, if the three of you wanted to, to go forward with it now, you know, I'd be, I'd be fine with it, but it sounds like none of us really, or at least three of the four of us are ready to proceed without going that, that route. And if, if as we go down the road, we decide that we need it, we could probably get somebody who could give us an answer in, in a fairly short period of time.
Good. I'm comfortable with that. Yep.
Okay. So we do have, I do see two hands raised. Alex, if you want to, on my, on, on my list of the attendees, I don't know if this is in order chronologically, but I see Dave Lazarus first and then Maggie Abruzzese second. Dave Lazarus just dropped off. Oh no, because he's now with us. Dave, welcome. Please take yourself off mute.
Thank you very much. Bear with me for one. There we go. Coming to you live from my basement on Oxbow Road. Good evening, everybody. First of all, before I get into the substance of this, I, I just want to thank, thank Mr. Alpert, thank the board. You know, this is clearly a very complicated issue that's before the board. I've sat through a lot of meetings now and, and it is clear that while I think we may disagree on a lot of the substance in some what I would consider important ways, you know, having the opportunity to speak, having you revisit your thought on whether or not to let the community participate in each step of your decision-making process, these are all important things. And I'm not speaking for anybody but myself, but I, I recognize that everybody is trying to do what they think is the right thing and I really appreciate that. And so that's the spirit with which I make my comments tonight. I just want to, you know, as far as the ethics issue goes, one last thing before I move on to that, I just was looking at the index while other people were speaking and whoever put that together, that was clearly a ton of work and it's a really great document to have. So thank you for that as well. And, and so as far as the ethics issues, and I want to speak later at the appropriate time about the traffic and safety concerns, but the ethics issues, this is an incredibly serious issue and it is not a matter of whether somebody who happens to work in the town is also volunteering. Everybody has a right to make a living, everybody has a right to, to volunteer and run for office and give up their time and, and serve our community. And those two things don't have to be mutually exclusive, but anybody who does choose to participate, as everybody on the board knows, has to do so within the confines of the law. And so Ms., Ms., Ms. Abruzzese is, is prepared, I think, to address a lot of substance of the ethical violations that we, or that, that I have seen and that I believe a complaint has been made about. But, but in sum, it's, it's a matter of the chair of the select board is not allowed to represent another person before this board, period, full stop. He can do other things to make a living, he can be a real estate developer, but he's not allowed to apply for a permit on behalf of someone else, either Needham Enterprises or Mrs. Day. And that's what's happening here. Then on the other hand, Mr. Glusing, who I'm sure is a wonderful architect and, and nobody is disputing or making any of this personal as these individuals, they're trying to do what they think is right, we disagree and we think that there's ethical problems here. Mr. Glusing, when he appeared before the planning board at one of the prior hearings, he was vouching for the planning board about what a design review board would and would not consider normal and would be doing. And, and he's the chair of the design review board who's essentially conflicted off of that, who's also advising this board on the duties of that board. And so the overlap is ethically very troubling, the optics of it are very frightening as a taxpayer. And so the board obviously has a duty to the town and to the citizens. I understand there are several attorneys on the board, the board has clearly demonstrated, it's a group of very smart, competent people, but that's not the issue. Essentially, the board is electing to go pro se in this matter and to address issues outside of their own specialty and their expertise, when all the board seemingly has to do is request the town approve a specialist to come in and advise the board. The harm of the board not choosing to do so is drastic. The property will be leveled, a building may start that if, if ultimately there is an ethical violation which is found, which the community, the neighbors and the abutters have, have indicated that they think is, is possible. If the community were to ask this board to rescind the permit at a later time after the project has started, it could be disastrous. There can either be, the best case in that scenario would be a project that's completed. Worst case is a project that's halfway done and a permit gets pulled and now we've got an eyesore and a danger to the kids in all different ways in the community. So the harm to the community of choosing to continue without an expert opinion about the ethical pitfalls here is very significant. And the harm for, for the developer for waiting is not as significant. Winter is coming, it is, I'm not an expert in construction, I would consult an expert on this, but it is doubtful that this property is going to be built in the next, you know, few weeks before winter is here. I don't know what happens over the winter, I have no idea, but the delay necessary to at least let Mr. Heap get the expertise that he's requested is, is small. And it's the, the delays so far, I think it's really important to keep in mind, have been all at the request of the proponents. The developer has asked for every break, this board has not said to the developer, we're stopping, you have to do this, you have to do that. The developer has asked for the board to take the pauses that it has taken. So it is not as though this board has kept this project lingering and I'm almost done and I'll stop. And again, I really appreciate the opportunity to speak. There's an actual conflict here that is, is hurting the town, even if there's not an actual conflict here, even if I'm wrong, even if there's no conflict. This is now a public issue in the town where the town is looking to the board to see what its elected officials are going to do. And for the board to say, we could ask to hire a lawyer, but we're not going to simply because we think we're right, is, is a, a tough thing for the town to swallow. All that is required is to get an expert to come in. That's all that we're asking. Take the time to do this right, please. The harm of continuing is, is really irreparable to us. And so I would just urge you to, for somebody to make a motion to ask the town to authorize independent counsel and for the board to pass that and to get independent counsel, even if you continue with the hearing tonight and don't take action, you hold it open, you can do both of those things. But getting counsel, getting somebody to advise the town and the members of this town on what is actually happening and what should happen is critically important. And with that, I'll yield back and again, thank you everybody for, for what you do for the town and for letting us participate tonight.
All right. David, thank, first of all, thank you for your kind words that you started with. We appreciate those comments and our staff did work hard to put together that list of documents and we greatly appreciate it. I don't, I don't, well, first, first of all, the delays were not always at the request of the developer. The August, the August hearing was delayed by the board's initiative because materials were submitted so, so late that, that the board, I believe, I'm going to, I'm not, not, not even believing, but guessing to the applicant's chagrin, decided to postpone the August hearing to tonight. So I wanted to clear that up. I, I don't think we're going forward the way we are because we're convinced that we're right. Maybe I am convinced that the board really doesn't have a place in the ethics debate, which I, I, I understand that the neighbors disagree with that, but we have asked the state ethics commission, we may or may not get an answer from them and if, you know, their, their answer may obviate the need for, for an independent opinion. I think we would need to get an independent opinion if we didn't hear from the state ethics commission by the time we were ready to, to close the hearing. Those are my answers to, to the issues that Mr. Lazarus just raised. Yes, Adam? You're, you're on mute, Adam.
Thank you. Sorry about that. So Evans, I'd like to ask you the question directly. If I understand correctly, what Mr. Lazarus has suggested is that by law, the chair of the select board is not lawfully allowed to represent another party here, the, the daycare business, in front of another board, separate for whatever violation, perceived violation that perhaps Mr. Glusing may have had, that, just on that issue itself, is it your, have, have, are you, what is your opinion on that question of law?
My opinion is very clearly that on the allegation that because Mr. Barelli is the manager and member of Needham Enterprises LLC, he, he cannot pursue any development that requires a permit from another board in this town, I simply disagree with that.
But the distinction that's being made is that it's not really a permit necessarily for his direct benefit. It's a permit for a tenant, for a different party.
The issue is not, the issue, as I understand it, under the applicable law, the issue is, has to do with the fact that it is not as I understand it, under the applicable law, the issue is, has to do with the fact that it is not Mr. Borelli who is the applicant. The applicant is Needham Enterprises LLC. And the fact that he is uh a member or the manager of that does not make him a person acting in his capacity as or in his status as member of the Select Board. That's that's, you know, corporate entities have legal significance. And there is a legal significance in this particular matter to the fact that the applicant here is an LLC, not Mr. Borelli personally. Moreover, as may come up at some point during this hearing, the other, another allegation has been made in this with respect to this issue, which is, you know, whether Mr. Borelli or Needham Enterprises has rece- has been paid for this. Now, because that's part of the issues raised by the opponents of this project. And the fact of the matter is that he has not. He has not received anything of value. He does not have a lease with the operator of Needham Children's Center. In theory, obviously, we want Needham Children's Center, which we think is an asset to the town, to be the tenant here. But in theory, not in theory, in reality, Needham Children's Center has no legal obligation right now. If they want to pull out and walk away, they can. And so I do not think it is accurate to say that he is a apart from the distinction between him personally and Needham Enterprises LLC, it is not accurate to say that he is doing this for, as an agent for Needham Children's Center. And so I think for both of those reasons, it is simply incorrect to say that Mr. Borelli is engaged in ethical in violations of the state ethics law simply by having a legal connection to Needham Enterprises LLC or being the manager or the member uh of the of the LLC. I do not agree that that results in a in a violation of the state ethics law.
So I, so I I agree that courts have made a distinction between a natural entity as an individual and a corporate entity as having, as being two separate beings. I I recognize that. I do, as you're saying, wonder if we've opened up another can of worms where the where in fact now we actually have perhaps no daycare center. We have a developer acting on his own accord to develop a building that theoretically is going to be used as a daycare center. And I mean, by clearly all intents, we all intend, we see the work that's being done by by uh by Pat. And and the reason why the engineer has been engaged and the drawings have been drawn up, the civil engineer, the traffic engineer, clearly, the it it seems as though the intent is to have a daycare center. And yet now I wonder to what extent we're actually driven by by the Dover Amendment as a protected use if it's no daycare center currently. Does that raise
The answer, the answer to that is very clear and simple. When a special permit is issued here, which I believe it should be, obviously, one of the conditions is going to be that it is used as a childcare facility. And, you know, that i- it 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 probably can't be a condition that it be Pat Day or Needham Children's Center, but it certainly could be a condition as to the various operational features um uh that she has described and that are found in Mr. Gillen's analysis about the number of children and the hours and when the children arrive and leave. So um I, you know, obviously, we hope that that's going to work out. But I think the board should be mindful of the fact that right now Mr. Borelli is doing this at his own risk, you know. So I I I I think that's a a very meaningful fact, both in terms of whether or not there's an ethical violation here, but also in terms of his good faith. There's been a lot of allegations here. And, you know, people are saying, well, we think everybody's acting in good faith and we just disagree. People are alleging that Mr. Borelli is violating a criminal statute. That is a serious allegation, and we do not take it lightly.
You know, the, can I just ask you a question about that because what I heard was you said Mr. Borelli is doing this at his own risk. Shouldn't you have said that his LLC is doing it at its own risk? Isn't that what you meant? Because if he's doing it at hi- at his own risk, I think that's that argues against what you were just saying.
There are two issues going on here. The statute has very specific wording. And if you are trying to allege, as as every member of this board who's a lawyer knows, that criminal statutes need to be construed very precisely and narrowly. And the issue with respect to the criminal statute it that is being alleged to have been violated is whether or not there is in fact a violation. And that turns on things like whether or not there is a, there is a legal distinction to be made between an LLC and the member and manager of this LLC. I believe that there is for the purpose of interpreting that statute and whether or not there's been a violation. Let's not pretend that we don't know that Mr. Borelli is the member and manager of this LLC. So yes, ultimately, if this project fails, it's going to redound to his detriment. But that does not mean that he is violating the statute or that it is a meaningless distinction between himself and Needham Enterprises LLC for the purpose of determining whether or not this is statutory violation.
Well, I and I totally understand that, Evans. But if you're trying to keep some lawful distance between who's the real applicant here, and you tell us that this is all being done at his own risk, not the, not the LLCs, you're certainly blurring the waters. I don't think you want to do that.
Okay, fair enough. I take your point.
And and let me just add, because this is important, actually, to me. We've spent a lot of time hearing from Pat, all about the Children's Center. They've been wonderful corporate citizens and for many, many years. I just wanted to be clear to all those people who are telling us this, that I think that all of that is interesting, but misplaced. I don't think this hearing is about Needham's Children's Center. Not because of the distinction that there's no lease signed, but because this is about this site and what's proposed to be done at this site. Not what Needham Children's Center has done in the past someplace else, but how this particular property is to be used and how it's going to affect the area and all that. So for those who want to tell us about Needham Children's Center, you know, to some extent, it's it's up to the, our Chair to allow that, but to me, it doesn't really matter. I just want everybody to understand that.
Well, okay. And I guess I would respond to that by saying, again, clearly, if and when a special permit is issued in this case, it is going to include a number of conditions, one of which one of which will be that the product, that this building is used for a childcare facility.
Right.
And so uh we are designing it with with Needham Children's Center as, you know, in cooperation with them, with their input, with their, with their desires and their schedule and the kind of environment they want to provide for their children. We certainly hope and and intend that they will be the occupant. But I agree with you technically, you know, um right now, before you, the applicant is Needham Enterprises. And we are, we are seeking approval for a building that is going to be used as a childcare facility.
I completely get it, but I think it's mu- very much more than a technical point. Because um whether or not Needham Children's Center is your first tenant, they could sell the business a year later. There's nothing at all that we could do about it. There's nothing at all that the Planning Board would have the authority to say about it in advance or at the time. So we cannot proceed, we never proceed, as if only one particular person or company is going to use a particular place. We just don't do that.
No, I understand that.
So, but I I know you do, but I think there's a lot of people probably listening in who don't appreciate that difference. But I just want, for their per- for their purposes, I wanted to make sure that they get it. And this is no, this is no criticism of Pat. I mean, for, I don't know Pat, but she's got a wonderful business. She's got a terrific reputation. It's all great. I just want everybody to know that this isn't really about Pat.
I I want to point out, because I've been reading as much as I can of the cases that are involved here, there is at least one case that I've read. I'm stretching my brain as to whether there's more than one, but there's, there's at least one case that I've read where the applicant was the property owner. There was a stipulation of facts that was agreed to by the property owner and the Planning Board or the Zoning Board of Appeals. I I forget which was the permit granting authority in that case. But there was a stipulation of fact that he intended to lease it to a Children's Center. Did not have a tenant yet. And the case proceeded. The case went to to the judge to make a decision on the issue that wasn't in front of it, which, you know, had to do with the land use and the zoning bylaws and the forty A section three issues. But but in that particular case, there was no specific tenant yet. And the applicant was not going to run a Children's Center. He was a property owner, like, like Needham Enterprises. Uh and as I said, that case went to trial and and uh proceeded. So there's, there's some, there's some precedent for that.
And we would certainly make that representation or have that be a condition or a stipulated fact, because that is in fact the intent.
Okay, um we now have three other attendees uh who wish to speak. Oh, no, I'm getting a notice. I forgot to plug in my computer, so I'd better plug it in before I lose you guys. My power is getting low. I'm plugged in. Maggie Abruzzi, I believe, is next. Alex, if you can bring Maggie aboard. Maggie, you're muted. Unmute yourself and you have the floor.
Hi, thank you. I'm Maggie Abruzzi at Thirty Vital Trail. Uh I would like to echo David's thank you to all of you uh in working on this. I certainly see how many hours and hours you each spend doing the business of the Planning Board. And I really appreciate all that time and that effort. I would like to, in addressing the ethics issues, I would like to take a step back for a moment and just remember that this started more than a year ago. Selectman Matt Borelli personally reached out to the Director of Planning, Lee Newman, by email. And he said, hi, Lee, I have a client interested in starting a childcare facility at sixteen eighty eight Central Avenue with me as developer. That was the beginning of this case. Selectman Borelli wanted to know how he could get town approvals to build this childcare center for his client. As developer today, Selectman Borelli is arguing that Needham's zoning bylaws are invalid. He has said more than once to this board, you can't inquire about this particular thing or you can't impose a particular restriction here or there under the bylaws because of the Dover Amendment. He's arguing that the interests of his daycare client in building the building as proposed outweigh the legitimate municipal interests of Needham that the zoning bylaws seek to protect. In other words, where the interests of Needham and his client conflict, Selectman Borelli argues that his client and not Needham should prevail. This is a conflict of interest, and there are at least three different ethics laws that make what he is doing here illegal. And I do not say that lightly. I absolutely would not make such a serious allegation lightly. I have given full briefs on the law and the facts that make this so. When we talk about Mr. Glessing, excuse me, Mr. Glusing, Mr. Glusing is Chair of the Design Review Board. The Design Review Board is responsible for reviewing the project and giving input to this board. The DRB has reviewed this project, including Mark Glusing's own architectural drawings and has expressed some concerns with the design. Mark Glusing stood before you last hearing and advocated that you should accept his designs as is. He took a position that is in direct conflict with what his own board recommended. This is a conflict of interest. Mr. Glusing is pursuing the private interests of his client instead of the mu- municipal interests of Needham. Ethics laws were created to prevent this situation. The training materials given to every special municipal employee in Needham specifically talk about how it is illegal to allow professional documents prepared by you to be submitted to your own board or to any board in connection with matters that are before your own board. They specifically talk about not being paid to give a developer advice about how to get a project approved by your own board. They specifically talk about how you can't appear before the Planning Board if the matter involves something that is under consideration of your own board. I recognize that this planning board, y- you're not specialists in ethics laws. You can't litigate these issues and you can't determine the legality of what Selectman Borelli and DRB Chair Glusing are doing here. And I'm not asking you to litigate it. I'm not asking you to make that determination. What I'm asking you to do is to pause, to seek legal counsel and make sure that everything is proper before you proceed. There are legitimate questions here raised about whether it's legal for Mr. Glusing to submit his architectural drawings to this board in support of Needham Enterprises' application. About whether it is legal for Mr. Glusing to appear before this board and give testimony in support of Needham Enterprises' application. And whether it is legal for Selectman Borelli's company, which is wholly owned and operated by him. He's not just a manager of some huge conglomerate. He, Mr. Borelli is Needham Enterprises. There is no one else involved in that LLC. So the question is, is it legal for Mr. Borelli's company to pursue an application for this board's approval? The interests of Needham are best served if this board does not base its decisions on the contents of applications that are submitted in contravention of the law, on architectural drawings that are submitted in contravention of the law, or on testimony that is submitted in contravention of the law. The board should protect the integrity of in- of proceedings before it by insisting that people who file applications or submit supporting materials or give testimony be doing so legally. If the board looks the other way and allows the application to go forward in spite of legitimate questions about conflict of interest, that significantly erodes the public's trust and confidence in the ta- integrity of Needham's government and the proceedings before this board. We are not accusing the Planning Board members of impropriety here. But you need to recognize that your decision is only going to be as good as the information you base your decision on. If the opinions that you get from various towns If the opinions that you get from various town boards are skewed because of the proponents' position of power over the people who need to give you feedback on the application, then your decision is going to be skewed. Not because you're biased, but simply because the feedback that you receive from the police chief or the fire chief or the town engineer or the health department or town council is given differently because of the fact that they are commenting on the project of someone who is in a position of power over them. Someone who votes on their collective bargaining agreements. Someone who votes on their department budgets. Someone who votes on their facility rentals, renovations. Someone who votes on whether to put town council's contract out to bid. They are commenting on the project of someone whose support they need. Conflict of interest laws recognize that citizens generally will not personally know each of the people serving in town government. Citizens are not in a position to know the inner thoughts of each municipal employee and whether someone would be improperly influenced by the fact that it is one of the five most powerful leaders in the town that is asking for their department or their board's approval or comments. That is why conflict of interest laws outright prohibit municipal employees from making money from town approvals, particularly where the matter involves their own board or boards or departments that the employee oversees. That is why conflict of interest laws prohibit an employee from representing a client's interest in matters in which they should be representing the town of Needham's interests. The case of the Board of Selectmen of Barnstable versus the Alcoholic Beverages Control Commission case that I had sent to you in a prior filing stands for the proposition that municipal boards always have the power to insist on common sense standards of propriety, that they always have the power to protect the integrity of their proceedings. Propriety and common sense dictate that this board should pause what it's doing and make sure that the legitimate ethical questions presented here are answered before it moves forward on the application. This does not mean you have to wait for a resolution of the state ethics complaint. The ethical questions could be resolved expeditiously by Matt Borelli and Mark Glusing themselves. They could exercise their right to get a written opinion from the State Ethics Commission on these questions, and they could submit those opinions to this board. Alternatively, the questions could be resolved, as you suggest, by hiring an independent legal counsel who's an expert in ethics to give a full legal written opinion on the ethical questions raised here and on what avenues the board has available to it. I urge you to safeguard the integrity of the proceedings before this planning board by insisting that the ethical questions be answered before you consider the merits of the proponents' application.
Thank you. Thank you for a well-presented argument. Adam, did you have your hand raised?
I did. And Pat, unfortunately, this little fellow is, is nine and has passed the age of daycare. I wouldn't even know your daycare existed when we moved to town. Maggie, I don't take lightly the comments that you've said, clearly, and none of us do. You have presented well here verbally, and the written submissions that you have made are well researched and, and are persuasive. Enough to a point that I have articulated my desire to actually have my cake and eat it too. The will of the board may be different, but the, the, I think that there may be a middle ground to be able to proceed, not to render our decision immediately, but to at least continue with the merits of the thing while we are outstanding on the question of the scope of our own authority. Not the scope of the planning board, not the scope of the Design Review Board. Only the scope of our own. We know we cannot decide a function, a question of law, on ethics. We don't have that purview. Our scope is, is a little different. I, I have one question for you. You, you asked, you, you made a comment that the Select Board Chair Borelli emailed Lee, the town director. I don't have a copy of that email in front of me. Did he do that from his Select Board Needham dot M A gov email? Or did he do that from a separate email acting in a different capacity?
He did not use the Select Board email. Am I five? You can hear me? Yes?
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you. He did not use the Select Board email. He used his personal email address to personally reach out to Lee Newman to ask her how to get this project approved for his client, a childcare center who wanted to build at sixteen eighty eight Central Avenue.
So, so I, I have a, you're also insinuating that, that Matt is in the pockets, that the police chief and the fire chief and these town offices are in the pockets of this Select Board Chair because they, because the Select Board and he as chair has oversight and direct participation into their negotiations. I think you have some validity in some of the arguments that you've made. But that suggestion, I have to say, is a, is, I will say it this way, is a distraction away from the substantive elements before us on the development. I do think, again, you have some, that you've raised valid questions, which is so valid, in fact, that I actually think that we are, that we should consider having an expert counsel, special counsel, advise us on the extent of the, you know, whether, if there are violations and the extent to which those violations are within our own purview. But I do need to draw a line on what I think is inside the scope and what I think is outside the scope. Again, I think your legal research is, is detailed, and I think, and I, and the questions you have raised are valid. And I appreciate you being engaged in the process, if nothing else, to teach this little nine-year-old the importance of what civil engagement is all about. And now he's being called to bed. I love you, monkey. I'm sorry.
Can I just, can, can I just, I understand what you're saying about the ugliness of contemplating that someone's professional work would be affected by who it is asking them to comment on their project. And I, I, I am not saying, I know for a fact that so-and-so did such-and-such because somebody said to, that isn't what I'm saying. What I'm saying is the reason that conflict of interest laws exist is so that no town employee has to make that decision. Do I comment? How much, every town, in every giving of comment, there's a degree of latitude. You can give no comment, you can give meek and mild comments, you can give strong comments. And I have no way of knowing, and no citizen in Needham has any way of knowing to what degree the position of the person asking for approval of their project has on the way that those comments are given and the, the whether or not they're given or how they're given. I know if my boss is asking me to comment on something, I think carefully about my response. Because why am I going to anger someone who has a lot of control over me? And I'm not saying that that has happened here. What I'm saying is, this is why we have conflict of law.
You more, Maggie, with respect.
Statutes.
You've argued more than that. You didn't just do that. You've suggested that there is, that there is, you've implied an impropriety here. And I recognize and agree with you that, that every citizen has a right to, you know, for a, a duty to expect a proper lawful process is happening.
Yes.
But to think that the, you know, that, that our public safety officers are going to turn around and just grant the guy, you know, wink, wink, nudge, nudge approval effectively on this kind of thing for a twenty percent share of a vote on, on a separate duty is, is a different issue. That's my own personal, I, I don't, but.
Adam, Adam, let me just say, that's why, what I hear from Maggie is less than you're suggesting. What I hear from her is perception is important.
I agree.
Why, she says that's why the ethics law are written the way they are, perception.
Can I, can I bounce back to Paul for a second? Paul, can I ask if we can hear from Evans, his response to Maggie's presentation?
You can ask.
Evans? You have a floor.
Thank you. So I don't think that we should be sugarcoating what's going on here. I happen to agree with Adam, and I think he's actually being extremely polite. Nobody could have listened to what Ms. Abruzzi, Abruzzi-Zee, or Abruzzi, I'm not sure if the correct pronunciation of her last name, said and not hear her strongly imply that various town officials are skewing their opinions and decisions because of the fact that Mr. Borelli is the Chair of the Select Board. And I think that every member of this board would agree with the idea that not only is that not happening, but this board and the, as is clearly apparent from the comments made by the Design Review Board are going in the opposite direction. This board has given every accommodation to the people who oppose this project and to listen to their complaints and objections. The Design Review Board has reviewed this project three times and given a detailed memo, which has been amended, and then amended again with various kinds of comments, many of which are not particularly favorable to this project, to suggest that somehow Mr. Glusing's chairmanship of the DRB has resulted in favorable treatment from the Design Review or that what this board is doing and is contemplating doing and will do when it issues a special permit, if that ever happens, is somehow affected in Mr. Borelli's favor because he is a member of the Select Board is to ignore what's actually been happening for the past six months since we filed this application. So, you know, it, there is just no basis, there is no basis whatsoever for the idea that this process has been tainted in Mr. Borelli's favor by the fact that he is a member of the Select Board. And so a very good job of lawyering, just like, you know, Mr. Junta demonstrated, a very good job of lawyering has been, has been done to find and allege violations by Mr. Glusing of the conflict of interest laws and so forth. But what I would ask this board to do is to step back and look at, you know, Ms. Abruzzi talks about why was the conflict of interest law enacted? The conflict of interest law was enacted, in my view, to prevent people in positions of power and authority in the, in a, in a town from using that position, those positions of power and authority for their personal benefit or for some benefit that is antithetical to the interests of the town. Nobody in, on this board believes that that is what's happening here. Nobody believes that, that Mr. Borelli is getting a leg up or getting a more favorable decision or getting a pass on any issue with respect to this project because of his status. So technical violations have been alleged. Maybe the State Ethics Commission will conclude that those are correct, that, that, that those violations have been identified. I don't know how that's ultimately going to play out. But I don't think anybody can think that the substance and spirit and intent of the ethics law, which is to prevent somebody who's a member of a town or municipal board, in this case, from using that position for their own personal gain is what's going on here. Thank you.
Okay, we have, we have two other people who have raised their hands. And Matt Hydeman has been going in and out on his hand raise. So he's now behind in the queue, but because he's been up there and going back and forth, I'm, I would like to call on Matt Hydeman first before going to the third, to the, to the other party that has a hand raised. Matt, you're up, and you can unmute yourself. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate the acknowledgement, Mr. Alfred, I really do. Mr. Huber and Planning Board, I want to address a couple of different things. So my role as a day-to-day citizen and what I provide to this community is I am a business development manager to the public sector of all of our federal government. And for you to sit here and say that holding boards or positions on boards does not give us a leg up in situations for commercial use is an absolute facade. I do this every day for my job. I do this through professional lobbying organizations. I do this through positions that I hold on charitable foundations or five twenty-nine organizations. And I do this because it gives me access to the people that control the ability to more or less control the outcome of my project. And for you guys to sit there and say that this is a legal aspect of the way things work, regardless of whoever sent an email to a public official, whether it came from his Gmail address or whether it came from his professional Needham address, I understand, but the implications here are absolutely one hundred percent warranted by what Mrs. Abruzzi has said. And I just want you guys to understand that, and I do this at the highest level of our federal government on a day-to-day basis. And I just want that comment on record.
Thank you.
May, may I ask Mr. Hydeman for his address? Not sure we have that yet.
Seventeen oh eight Central Avenue.
Thank you.
Which is the, which is the immediate butter to this on the opposite side of the temple.
Okay, thank you, Matt. Shannon Buckley, you have your hand raised. You're up. You can unmute yourself and join us. Please give us your address.
Hi, I live on Harris Ave, and I just wanted to talk for us, as a staff member at NCC, I think that's kind of been overlooked so far. I, I have a business degree, I have an education degree, I understand the intricacies of everything that's going on, but I think we're so tied up in like the ethical dilemma that we're kind of forgetting all the other people and ethical situations. And ethical situations that are tied up in this decision, um. I've worked at NCC for almost seven years and I just want to say that most of the people watching tonight are the teachers. And we're kind of waiting to see, you know, we know that it's possible that the First Baptist Church is closing. We're trying to find a new location, so. A lot of us are wondering, do we have jobs in a year? What are we kind of doing there? Um, I know you're debating a lot about Matt Barelli and all of that. I don't know him, I've never met him. I can't speak to any of that business relationship, but I just wanted to say that a lot of the staff members. At NCC are longtime Needham residents. I, you know, I went to Mitchell, I went to Pollard, I went to Needham High, I've lived in Needham my whole life. And I'm tied to this family and we're just kind of wondering what our future is. Here, and I think that that's a big factor that's being overlooked. I understand that it's not necessarily about Needham Children's Center and more about the location, but also. Where else are we supposed to go? You know, Needham's a jam-packed town, there's tons of businesses, it's thriving. Also, Adam, our after-school program goes up to age eleven, fifth grade, so you're invited. If you want to sign up. Um, but I just kind of wanted to speak on behalf of the teachers that many of us are Needham residents, many of us grew up in Needham. We have strong ties to Needham families. And I agree that this kind of ethical debate kind of seems like a personal attack on. The developer, whatever, and less about the location and the school and we're all kind of. You know, the meetings keep getting delayed and we're all kind of wondering what our future for our jobs are. And, you know, we love our NCC family and none of us want to go anywhere, so. If we could still have a home, that would be great.
Thank you. We appreciate your comments. So I don't see any other hands raised, um, so I think we can close out this issue, so. The question is, in my mind, the question is whether. What we've heard was enough to change the board's mind. About. A proceeding tonight and B hiring special counsel to advise us. So, Adam? You're muted, Adam.
I think we continue on the substance. What's the harm in engaging? A, uh, um. What's the harm to us of engaging a special counsel? To, uh, advise on the scope of the authority. Of any appearance of a violation in the process.
Jean and Marty, you want to respond?
Go ahead, Jean.
Uh, yes, um, the, the, it, it seems to me that the only issue that we would be asking special counsel for advice on. Is whether when, um, a complaint has been filed with the State Ethics Commission. A planning board must cease acting on an application until that issue is resolved.
I would apply that, Jean, I'm not sure the word is must, it's must or should.
Okay, um, all right, must or should, um, and, um, I. I, I, I feel comfortable that we can go forward with this hearing. Um, and I don't think we're going, I mean, it's already nine thirty and we have a lot to discuss with regard to the, um. Traffic report and the peer review, and I feel certain the hearing will be continued. Um, and, um, you know. It's possible that there will be some, something coming from the State Ethics Commission. But I, I just don't feel the need for that advice. I feel comfortable about going forward.
Marty?
Uh, I would say I'm, I think I'm convinced that. Number one, we should proceed with this hearing tonight. Uh, keep it moving. And I'm also now convinced that. Um, as Adam seems to be, that why not? Why not go ahead with a special counsel, an independent counsel who has expertise in this area? Um, I think we all concede that we're not, we don't have that expertise. Which is why we've been hoping to get some guidance from the Ethics Commission, but we don't have it, we don't have it yet. So I would be convinced, I would, I changed my mind on that, that, um. I would go ahead and seek counsel and I, I wouldn't necessarily. Limit that counsel to any particular question. I want advice. What should we do? This is what we have done. What should we do on the ethics front? I would keep it fairly general. That's what I am.
Okay, so. We've heard a lot of information. I'm convinced, number one, that there is a remedy in the law here if the state ethics. One, one, we should go forward. We should get our facts. We should hear everything we're gonna hear and we're clearly not gonna close tonight. I don't even know if we're gonna close at the next hearing, um, in October. Because there's a lot of information that we need to get and there's a lot of discussion that we need to have for whatever. Um, conditions and what the courts call reasonable regulations we put on this project. There is a remedy, which is that we issue our decision. Uh, the State Ethics Commission makes its findings and if they find that there have been ethics violations. We can ask that the project be rescinded. Now think about that. This is gonna take a long time. I think it's gonna take a long time for the State Ethics Commission to even reach this. Especially during COVID times and we're still in COVID times. So we could, we could render our decision. The building could get started, the building could be built. And they find, if the State Ethics Commission finds ethical violations. We could ask to rescind our decision and then there's a building that's there. Mr. Barelli would have spent a lot of money to put that building up. And if our decision is rescinded, and we don't get to rescind our decision, the, the, I think the statute is clear. That at that point, it's the State Ethics Commission that decides whether to rescind the decision. And if the decision is rescinded, it seems to me. That the remedy is that the building comes down.
Or, or it's also possible that the building be sold.
Well, but sold for what, Adam? Because, you know, there are, it's still, it's still single residences, eh?
Paul, unfortunately, we don't know what the remedies are, we're speculating.
Yeah.
And that's enough.
But if, if we say, well, if, if you can't have a daycare center, building has to come down. Or if you can't find another, another tenant that is a permissible use. For that building, Mr. Barelli would have spent a lot of money for, to put up and then tear down a building.
I don't know, I don't know that he, I'm not convinced that he would necessarily have to.
It, it's a possibility, but he still, well, he still might spend a lot of money to put up. What, why is that being an empty building? Okay, or he has to turn it into a, one way or the other, I think that's something that he needs to consider. Um, I'm going to lean towards, let's get an opinion from an expert. And let's ask the town manager. Because I, that's who controls the purse spring, purse strings here. Um.
So on that basis, shall I make a motion? I move therefore that I, that, um, the Planning Board asks. The town manager for a special financial approval. For us to engage a special counsel. That is in fact a specialist in the matter of ethics law. State ethics law, um, and to advise us on the, on, uh. The scope of our authority and our, and the extent to which. We want a legal opinion on the extent to which we can continue and finalize our process. Uh, given the risk that in the event it's delayed by a certain amount of time. That the relief sought by the applicant is by the process of zoning law. Automatically rendered, uh, and where is the public good i- in that process? I think that, uh, so.
Um, Adam, is that part of your motion or, or is that, are those part of thoughts more like discussion?
Jean, I appreciate the distinction, I crossed over into opinions, so the motion is, thank you for clarity. The motion is, uh, um, I move that we ask the. Town manager for approval to engage. Special counsel who is a specialist in state ethics law to advise on the scope of our authority on this particular matter.
Motion's been made, do I have a second?
Um, would you be willing to amend the wording? So it's not the scope of our authority, but the, to advise on the. Let me think about this. Best course of action for the planning board at this time.
Yes.
Okay.
So amended.
Do I have a second to the amended motion?
Do I need a second, Matt?
Uh, well, it, it's your motion, Adam. Marty has asked you to amend it, you said yes.
And I will second the motion.
And Marty is seconding it. Jean, you have any further comments?
Um, if that is the consensus and apparently is of, uh, board members. Um, I certainly will go along with it. I will not vote against that, I will vote for it.
Okay.
I think Evans wants, wants to comment on it. I'm reading, is right.
Is it, is it procedurally appropriate for me to comment at this point?
I don't know.
I don't know. I'm gonna let, but I'm gonna let you do it if it's short because we gotta take a vote. And we gotta move on because we are continuing with this hearing to get information. We're not, we're not stopping because of this, we're, we're moving on on the substance of the application.
Okay, well, I appreciate that. I just want to be clear on what the applicant's position is on this issue of what the effect of delay is.
We know what the applicant. But go ahead.
Okay, uh, I mean, Mr. Black has alluded to it a few times, others have alluded to, you've alluded to it, Paul. Um, you know, as far as we're concerned, this board has already received. Uh, and, uh, an opinion in the form of an email from qualified town council that this. The hearing, you know, uh, to answer Marty's question, which is that the, that the, it's not this board's place to. Uh, you know, adjudicate this issue or to delay the hearing. To the extent the hearing is delayed any further as a result of this issue, the applicant does not consent to such delays.
Thank you, Evans. I think the whole purpose of what we're doing is so that we don't delay, so that we can continue with the hearing. Hopefully we can get, um, an opinion from an independent counsel. Um, from an independent expert counsel. Not to take anything away from Mr. Heap and his ability and his opinion. But I believe it's the consensus of this board that, um, we want to. Not totally rely on Mr. Heap's opinion. Um, this, this is so, there are so many subtle issues involved here that, um. And we're not delaying, I, I want to stress that, we want to move on here. And if we reach a point where we're ready to close the hearing and we don't have an opinion yet, this board will have to deal with that. Because we don't want to delay. Okay, any further comments from the board before I call for a vote?
Yes, I would say I have two comments. One, maybe we should have a, we should have a timeframe that we need. They want that opinion by the end of September, September.
We want the opinion as soon as possible. I'm not, I'm not gonna put time constraints on, 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 on a lawyer we haven't even hired yet.
I understand, I understand, so that's, um, that's fine.
And that's in, in that same vein, should we put a, a cap on the amount that we're asking the Select Board to give us to make this higher?
I don't know that we can do that. I, I think we need to, first of all, somebody has to make a recommendation as to a lawyer. Uh, who's an expert. I don't know anybody personally who's an expert in ethics law, we may. We may have to ask Mr. Heap for an opinion, um, I have suggested that we're. Bruce Eisenhardt. Um. Worked for many years at, at the Board of Our Overseers, he may know of somebody. Um, but we haven't been able to reach him. Um, and you know, we don't know, we don't know what the hourly rate's gonna be, we don't know how many hours. Our expert is going to guesstimate will be. How mu, you know, I, I, I don't know that we're in a position right now to know what kind of. What, what kind of cost, we'd have to ask the lawyer that we're looking to hire, what they think it will cost.
You're right, okay.
Okay, we ready for the vote? Mr. Block?
Aye.
Mr. Jacobs?
Aye.
Ms. McKnight?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Lee, please ask the town manager to authorize the funding and perhaps to, um. Ask Mr. Heap if he knows of an expert in the field. And I would ask you to continue to try to reach Mr. Eisenhardt.
Right, well, I'll reach out to the town manager, um, to request the hiring of special counsel.